Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, April 28th, 2021. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. Meetings can now be viewed live on the City Channel and live streamed on YouTube. Our first order of business is public comment. I'd like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council and profanity will not be permitted. Once we announce you, please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak. We have one registered speaker this morning, which is Shaman Pohmai.
In la casha, in la caen. Much has been said about the inspiration of the ancient Iroquois, the Great League of Peace, and planting the seeds that led to the formation of the United States of America and its representative democracy. The Iroquois Confederacy founded by the great maker in 1142 is the oldest living participatory democracy on earth. In 1988, the United States Senate paid tribute with a resolution to our people as I am Shaman Pohmai, Chakmamya Holahi of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And that said, the Confederation of the original thirteen penal colonies into one republic was influenced by the political system developed by my people, the Iroquois Confederacy, as were many of the democratic principles which were incorporated into the Constitution itself. And I noticed in the last meeting of City Council, there was much to do or much to say about knowing the history and well-versed in history. Well, if you do not know the history of the foundation of your very country that you have sworn oath to according to the Constitution, then you are not astute in history. We, the Onkwe Onway, wrote to the Iroquois in French, Gaia Karanowa, and in la casha, in la caen, our Great Law of Peace Constitution, recorded and kept alive till time immemorial. And many of the concepts familiar in the United States Constitution are patterned directly after our Constitution, the oldest democracy in all of the entire world. The Iroquois Confederacy and the Great Law of Peace is comparable to the United States Constitution in many ways. So while being versed in history, you must be versed in the history of how your government, your country that you're sworn to, under your flag that you pledged to, you must know that you have an obligation to the people that inspired your very government.
Thank you very much. That moves us on to our Standing Committee's agenda. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. My first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have our supplemental papers, Bill 1413.
Bill 1413, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 400 of 2020, authorizing the mayor and directors of the Department of Public Safety, Finance, and/or Public Works to enter into an agreement for acquisition of real property and execution of related agreements for the site of the former U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs facility known as the Highland Drive Medical Center located along the east side of Washington Boulevard at 7180 Highland Drive, where construction of a new facility and renovation of existing facilities for emergency management and law enforcement uses by City's Department of Public Safety.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to abstain, Mr. Chair. Councilwoman Gross.
Bill is recommended. One abstention. Thank you. Our new paper is Bill 1397.
Bill 1397, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with David Wright for Expert Witness Services Related to Pending Civil Rights Litigation Filed in the U.S. District Court in an Amount Not to Exceed $10,000.
Motion to hold for executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 It will be held for executive session. We now need a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved.
Second.
In session. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Now, we now need a motion to approve the P cards.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. Takes us to Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Mr. O'Connor. We have one deferred paper, Bill 1087.
Bill 1087, ordinance supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title I, Administrative Article III, Organization, Chapter 116, Department of Public Safety, to add a new subsection 11617 for addition on execution of no-not warrants by requiring all city police officers when executing any warrant to physically knock and announce the presence of police before entering a premises.
Motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It will be held two weeks. That takes us to Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill, first one deferred paper, Bill 1367.
Bill 1367, ordinance extinguishing in easement in 20-foot strip of real property adjacent to the easternly side of 21st Street, 60 feet in width between Smallman Street and Railroad in the second ward of the city.
Motion to hold for one week.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It will be held one week. First new paper, Bill 1395.
Bill 1395, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the PA Department of Community and Academic Development, Keystone Communities Grant Program, to Provide Funding for the Construction of a New Park Building in the Robert E. Lee Memorial Park. The grant proposal includes a request of $500,000 with a total match of $997,170 payable from the city's 2020 and 2021 capital budget. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $1,497,170.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I was trying to unmute myself.
Sorry.
I didn't remember the... We had a Bill about four mile run a few weeks ago and Councilman O'Connor kind of gave us his update. Could we, I mean, if you permit interrogatory, Councilman O'Connor can speak to this bill? I'm confused about which ones are which, actually.
This...
Or someone from Domi?
Yeah, we, sorry, Councilwoman. Yeah, we did this bill last week. We made an amendment, but this is a different bill. I actually did not, that's my fault. I did not see that. Usually we see this.
Well, you've had a lot going on in your world. This is, it does actually say work on the Mon Oakland Mobility Corridor, not the, not the, it does kind of in the titles, mentioned green infrastructure as well. Could someone help me out?
No, you're looking at a different bill.
Right.
Wrong bill 1395, which is to go after a grant request to support the rebuilding of a park shelter in the Upper Hill District.
Okay, where am I? I've lost. You're right. I've lost on my screen here.
Wrong page four, the bottom of page four, under Bill 1395.
Well, that explains it. I thought I was confused about something. I'll get myself straight. Thank you.
No worries. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Now Bill 1403.
Bill 1403, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 675 of 2008 entitled, adopting an improvement of 2009 capital budget and the 2009 through 2013 capital improvement program to change the city farms deliverable from Brookline only to Brookline and District 7.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That moves us to our Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson, first one deferred paper, Bill 1085.
Bill 1085, ordinance amending and supplement in the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Code, Article VI, Development Standards, Chapter 914, parking, loading, and access by adding a new subsection 91409J, parking access for single-unit attached residential uses to require rear or side access off-street parking spaces for single-family attached dwellings.
Motion to approve discussion.
Second.
Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. This was, this is a bill that was approved by the, or was recommended by the Planning Commission, and then we held a public hearing last week. And thanks to, want to say thanks to Councilwoman Strasburger and Gross for their, for their input at the public hearing. And, you know, I could go over it if the, if, if the director's not here, but if the director wouldn't mind just bringing everyone up to speed on a briefing. We have the record dash on the line.
I'm checking.
Okay, well, as we check, I'm in support. It's the, this, this is where we, you know, we initially took away the requirement to, that the developer would have to provide off-street parking in this single-family attached dwelling. Now, this is to limit the use to rear access, I'm sorry, rear, rear parking only. And if you are in a corner lot, then you can have, I believe, a side access for that corner lot. Okay, well, I don't, you know, I don't need a briefing, but if, if others do, we can, we can call him in. I have no further comment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Apologies again for like getting lost on my agenda. So I was very happy to attend the meeting and hear overwhelming support for this change. You've heard us talk about this before at the table when we did the other text amendment. Oh, sorry, Bruce, you're kind of cutting in. So we've, we've heard especially testimony that talked about how safety is reduced when kind of private driveways are put on to really heavily traveled sidewalks, especially in the really densely populated parts of the city that have these shared wall single-family dwellings, the townhouses basically, that it becomes really dangerous, especially for children or for people with mobility issues. Imagine you're going over sidewalk and you've got the curbs of the, you know, the kind of waves of a driveway cutting through and changing elevation on sidewalks that have for really truly more than 100 years in most of these neighborhoods, been just a flat level, totally just people-only space. I mean, now suddenly there are cars that could be going over them. You know, many of these densely populated neighborhoods, that's where people are taking routes to go to bus stops, to schools, to, you know, they're, they're really densely populated. There are lots of people on the sidewalk. They should not be competing with cars. And another really important point is that these are generally narrow lots and tight spaces, and adding car space actually increases the cost of the housing that's there, especially when it's new construction, to be, to have to add built car space. So for lots of reasons, I think this is a long overdue change. And we actually heard testimony to make it even more stringent. So we'll see how this one works. I think it's going to work really well, but there may be calls for even more changes. So I'm very supportive and I thank the administration for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Our new paper, Bill 1399.
Bill 1399, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with the Urban League of Pittsburgh for the Implementation Administration of the Housing Counseling Program and Related Costs in an Amount Not to Exceed $100,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That moves us to our Urban and Recreation Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Burgess. We have one new paper, Bill 1394.
Bill 1394, Resolution Submitting the Recommendation of the Commission on Naming Public Properties to Deny the Renaming of Niagara Parklet to Oak Cliff Community Playground.
Motion for public hearing.
Second. Yes, brief discussion, please.
Discussion.
Yeah, thank you. Customer Burgess apologized, or Customer Burgess apologized in relation around the call. So this has gone before the naming commission. The community of Oak Cliff wishes to name the playground Oak Cliff Community Playground, and the standardization process now calls for it to be called Niagara Parklet. I have spoken, I apologize, not to Councilman Lavelle, but Councilwoman Strasburger, and have had extensive conversations with planning, with Chief Gilman, and with members of the Oak Cliff community, and wish to override this recommend, this denial of the application to name the playground Oak Cliff Community Playground. So I will, absolutely in support of holding for the public hearing, and then if members will indulge me, I'll reach out to each of you individually to further flesh out the situation and why, as representatives of Oakland, we are going to ask that we overturn the denial. But this stage where we are now requires the public hearing, and so I will second the motion for the public hearing if it wasn't. And thank you for the time.
So just a quick process question, Madam Clerk. Do we first need, do we first need to vote to override the denial and then hold for a public hearing, correct?
We need to vote to override it with a super majority, and then, you know, once we override it, then that means that council is...
Permit it to hold it.
Exactly, yes.
So then, Mr. Chair, will you allow me to just go a little bit further and ask for the support of members for the override? The Oak Cliff community, the Oak Cliff community is adamant about their desire to see the playground named the Oak Cliff Community Playground. I apologize, Councilman Lavelle, that I hadn't spoken to you directly. I did spoke to Councilwoman Strasburger about the situation, and as representatives of Oakland, I'm asking if we would please support community desire to name the playground, the Oak Cliff Community Playground, and drive the public hearing and then have further discussion on that, please. Thank you.
So Madam Clerk.
Yes.
So maybe, I don't, I'm, I'm not quite understanding the process. It seems to me that therefore we can't hold this now. We have to give it a negative recommendation now, vote it down next Tuesday, and then come back to it. It, this, this is not, this standing committee is not an official action. So if we have to vote it down, we can't, we can't vote it down until Tuesday. So it seems to me the process has to be then to give it a negative recommendation today, vote it down on Tuesday, and then start the process again. I'm, I'm just asking for clarification.
So I, so right now it's coming to you as a negative recommendation. So you do have the ability to override it with a majority. You can in standing committee, if you want to vote to override the decision from the Planning Commission, you can do that. Then that puts it back into a positive, you know, recommendation from council, and we can call a public hearing. I don't think we have to go to official action, but we just need a super majority here in order to, number one, override it, and then you can call for a public hearing.
So you have to give it a negative recommendation first and then hold it. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, I'm suggesting that, that's how we do it with the, with the super majority. We override the, the recommendation from planning and then call for a public hearing because you, you know, I don't think we have to vote it.
All right.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Gross.
I don't know if this is helpful, but we, we've done overrides on historic recommendations, and I believe it followed the, the process that the clerk was just describing. A small house on, I think it was Foster Street in Lawrenceville, that was negatively recommended, and we overwrote it. Same thing. Thank you. That's all.
So I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote, just for clarity. If you vote yes, you're supporting the negative, the negative recommendation. What Councilman Kraus is asking us to do is to vote no, so we can override the negative recommendation.
Correct.
Roll call vote.
Reverend Burgess.
He said no.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Coghill?
No.
Ms. Gross?
No.
Mr. Kraus?
No.
Mr. O'Connor?
No.
Mrs. Cal Smith?
No.
Ms. Strasburger?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Lavelle Chair?
No.
Eye zero, nose nine.
So the bill is now before us with a positive recommendation, and so we now need another motion to hold for a public hearing.
Motion to hold for a public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It will be held for a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
That moves us to our Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. We have one new paper, Bill 1398.
Bill 1398, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter Into a Contract and/or Agreement with Informing Design Inc. and/or Homeless Children's Education Fund to Provide for the Continued Operation of the Pittsburgh Online Application and Providing for the Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $75,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It receives positive recommendation. That takes us to our last committee for today, Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross, one new paper, Bill 1396.
Bill 1396, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Soul Facilities Plan for 129 McLean Street, Commercial Property at 129 McKean Street.
Motion to prove a discussion.
Second.
The second, thank you, Councilwoman.
Yeah, first of all, I want to point out to the clerk that the zip code in the title is incorrect, and I'm checking the, the text file now. And so McKean Street is in 15219, and then some places in the text it says 15219, and some places it says 15201. That's what I'm finding. If you want to kind of take a look at it while I'm here to make sure I'm kind of editing while I go. So, Mr. Kraus, without, just before you comment, motion to make that, those easy changes. So, motion to amend? Shall we do that?
I'm not sure if we still have the correct information.
Okay. Do you want us to just hold and figure that out for next week, or?
Well, no, actually, this is a really an important development. This is a brewery slash grocer that has been on the, you know, on the agenda for probably the better part of two years now. It's a very important development that we want to see take place, but it is still in the third council district. It, it exists before the Smithville Street Bridge and just under the Liberty Bridge. It's at McKean at Second Street, I believe, and I think that should be 15203. I don't know why it's coming up 15219. Even on Google Maps, it's coming up as 15219.
That's what, that's where I got the zip code, when I, when I looked to see what development it was and where it is. Sorry for the interrogatory here, but we're just trying to figure out that we have the right information. So I thought it was a simple typo, because down at the bottom of the text file, under Section 1, City Pittsburgh hereby adopts a plan revision, it gives the address as 15219, and has the parcel number 3-a-80 in the 17th board. But then at the top of the text file, it says 201, and in the title, it says 201.
So Councilwoman, actually, I'm checking other businesses in the area. Albert's Tires is coming up as 219 as well. The Natural Energy Gas Station there is coming up as 219. So it, it sounds like 219 is actually correct. And if there are, if there are differences in the title, they all then need to be amended to correct them to be 15219.
All right. So let's just do that simply. All right. And so motion to amend.
Second.
And so I would like to change the title of the bill to say Pennsylvania 15219. And then in the body, I feel like I caught it one more time there. Does someone else see it, or is it just there in the title? I think that's just, just that one then. That's what I'm seeing now. So that's the motion. Motion to amend and to change the title to say 129 McKean Street, comma, Pittsburgh, comma, Pennsylvania, 15219.
Any further discussion on the amendment? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is amended. Discussion on the bill as amended?
I'll defer to Councilwoman Kraus. It's his district, and it seems like it's a great project.
Yeah, thanks, Councilwoman. It is a great project, and we're really excited about the reinvention of this building, and this will be a, a combination brewer, grocer, and restaurant. And I'm in full support of passage of the legislation today. Thank you. Thanks, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That exhausts our agenda for today. We do have some meeting announcements. Tomorrow, Thursday, April 29th, with sessions from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. and 2:00 to 3:00 p.m., Council will hold a briefing with Hello Neighbor, a local organization that matches Pittsburgh families with new refugee families. Next week, Council will hold our regular Standing Committee meetings on Tuesday and Wednesday, May 4th and May 5th at 10:00 a.m. You can register to speak by filling out the signup form on the Council Meeting Schedule webpage by 9:00 a.m. Tuesday and Wednesday mornings. You may also register by calling the City Clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Also, next Wednesday, May 5th at 1:30 p.m., Council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 1372 on a petition relative to the crisis of forced mass displacement of Black Pittsburghers and the reasons for this displacement. To register to speak at this hearing, please fill out the signup form on the Council Meeting webpage by 11:30 a.m. Wednesday, May 5th. You may also register by calling the City Clerk's office at 412-255-2138 by the registration deadlines. Is there any, anything else from members?
Hey, just quickly, if I could, Mr. Chair, just apologies. I kind of dropped the ball on the, on the Oak Cliff Playground renaming. I didn't mean to do that. It kind of snuck up on me, and I did have conversations. It kind of snuck up on me and I did have conversation with, uh, Councilwoman Strasburger. But, uh, Mr. Chair, I should have had conversation with you as well too, as a representative of Oakland. And just want to reiterate my appreciation of the council for supporting the Oak Cliff community and, uh, and wishing to name their playground as they desire. Thank you.
Thank you. No worries at all. Anything else from members? If not, uh, we need a motion to approve the absent member approved the minutes and adjourned the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.